Thank you. All right, everyone. It is six oh one and I call the city council meeting work session. I don't know where we are, November twenty sixth, the order. We'll call please.
Councilmember Edwards. Was that here?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Luna Leo.
Here.
Councilmember Best. Councilmember Thomas. Mayor Pro Tim Tharp.
Here.
And Mayor Green.
Here.
Thank you.
Right before we get to approval of the agenda, there's a couple of different versions of that agenda out there. One at the very end includes a discussion of a I scribbled it out and trying to read through my own scribbles. A discussion of an ordinance outlining policy for interactions with federal agents. I we've removed that from the agenda tonight. Our budget is is of the principal importance. It's one of our primary duties as council. And I think we're going to need every minute of our work session to cover it. So we're going to pick that other one to another day. So with that amendment or adjustment, I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Rest assured, the agenda.
Thomas, second. All in favor? You opposed? Okay, let's move on then to our department presentation for police department budget. You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Mayor and councilmembers, is it okay if I stand right here?
If you did, yeah, if you're kind of close to the owl, so the only people can hear you, it would be great.
Okay. I supplied my budget memo and as I said, this is a budget I inherited. I believe Dan Breyer is online, he's on Zoom to provide an update or correct me if I'm if I make some errors in my presentation as to what we're trying to accomplish here. But with this budget that I came into, we, I do believe we cut about two hundred thousand dollars. We eliminated an officer position. And we simply were trying to have enough staff that we felt would be adequate coverage for the city of Leadville. The two main law enforcement agencies in the county, us in Lake County, we rely a lot upon each other. But the way we're organized and with our shifts, I'm completely comfortable with cutting one of the officer positions that was proposed. Earlier this morning during a meeting, we also discussed, in reality, we we have two officers right now that are two recruits, I should call them, that we are going to send to the academy, one in January and one in April. We're staggering them because we only have two field training officers and it would be difficult to train two at the same time. I just made a job offer to a candidate who is post-certified, who's working as a teacher, he's been to the academy. We're hoping to start him January twenty. Based on the proposed budget, that means we have one open position, one position that we need to fill. In reality, we can't fill that position, we just don't have the means to train that person, get him on board until July first. So that's another fifty to sixty thousand dollars we can potentially save in this budget. And with some other little tweaks and adjustment, we we cut about two hundred thousand dollars from what was initially proposed. We're going to work a lot with the sheriff's department. The one thing that we're going to do is we had our own evidence custodian. It doesn't make sense, the sheriff's office has an evidence custodian as well. We have an IGA that allows us to utilize them to take care of our evidence. We'll still store it in this building. But their person, their employee is going to come over here several times a week, maybe two or three times a week to take care of our evidence. We don't take a significant amount of evidence in, but if we seize a firearm or something, it's important or drugs, it's important we have an appropriate chain of custody. The one thing I've discovered with this police department is we've got good people. There's just a lack of supervision and guidance. We don't want to micromanage our employees, but the one thing I would like to address over the next year is how we can better supervise those employees. I mean, I'm available by phone twenty four seven, but I'm not available twenty four seven to be here with the employees. Again, we don't want to micromanage them, we want to empower them, but we want to make sure they're adequately prepared so they can give our citizens the services they deserve and we don't face significant liability. Steve, mind your way, you're fine. So that I'm also and we we were given homework, I'll call it, for the city's strategic plan. The other thing I want to do with the sheriff's office is I want to come up with a formalized policy where we assist each other with major investigations, say a felony. I've also reached out to the state because I've discovered some properties in the city where there is likely significant drug activity occurring. So I've reached out to the state and they are going to, they said they're going to send a DCI agent up here in the expertise of drug investigations to at least assist us with these endeavors. These relationships and these collaborations are important. I mean, we as residents, we're paying state taxes, we would like to get some of the services from the state as well. And I have a contact with DCI, they're willing to help us out. Our CSO program, we do want to make it more robust. I do feel that there, it's a wonderful program, I'm a huge advocate of CSO programs. But again, we need more guidance and supervision for these employees. I have placed them under our office administrator or our administrative supervisor. And she said, well, chief, I'm busy with all my other things. I said, I know, but I'm going to help you with them. So the one, the one thing I've noticed in Leadville is we have a problem with abandoned vehicles. And I've talked to councilman Edwards about it, I think I discussed it with councilman Hill earlier this week. A lot of people, not a lot, but I see several vehicles that are parked in city right of ways and people are using them as storage. And we have vehicles that haven't been registered for one or two years and they're sitting on our city streets. I believe in using the word compassion a lot in our approach to law enforcement services. So we're not going to put an orange tag on a vehicle, tow it forty eight hours later. What I've directed the CSOs to do is try to get in touch with the registered owner, knock on some doors, see who the vehicle belongs to. And generally we'll give them one or two weeks, but it's dependent upon the circumstances. We have two police recruits now, as I've said, one that doesn't leave for the academy until January, the other doesn't leave until April. They're going to help enhance our CSO program. I've directed them to go out and tag these vehicles that are unregistered, obviously inoperable, obviously have been and the snow actually helps for identifying these vehicles because snow piles up around them, we'll be able to tell if they're sitting there for forty eight hours. They're going to orange tag them and we're going, we've established an Excel spreadsheet where all these vehicles are listed on there. And that will give our CSOs the ability to follow up on these vehicles that are a problem so we can get them moved. Let's see, as you know, the vast majority of our police department budget is for personnel. The only way we can save anymore or diminish our budget any further is through personnel. The one highlight in our budget in regard to an increase in cost is for the cost of dispatch. If I'm not mistaken, last year we paid a hundred seventy three thousand dollars. This year it did jump to three hundred and three thousand dollars, three hundred, three hundred and three or three hundred and four. And the reason for that is the sheriff's department or dispatch is adding personnel to adequately provide coverage for all of our residents. And in the past, they used to, they have a formula that you utilize to decide who's using the service of dispatch. I guess a good way for me to describe is like, it's like using a toll roll, you pay for the usage. In the past, they used to tabulate, the formula was by agency. So if a sheriff's deputy responded to a call in the city, that was charged to the county. And there have been many times over the past two, three years where the sheriff's office has handled a lot of calls in the city because we're simply short of staff. They've changed that, the formula has now changed where they bill by jurisdiction. If a deputy responds to a call in the city, it's by jurisdiction, it gets billed to the city. There's a cost for providing dispatch, generally it's twenty to thirty dollars per call, or it has been in my experience in the past. I haven't mentioned the numbers that closely in Leadville, but that tends to be the cost. So that's why there was the change in cost to dispatch, why I jumped from one seventy three to three hundred and three thousand.
Quick question, just to clarify, dispatch is E nine one one?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that is my budget presentation and I will answer any questions that anybody may have now.
Other questions for Chief Falcone?
Can I point out one thing just about the dispatch budget overall is it is broken out. So fire pays its portion separately, so there is an additional charge for, that ends up in fire's budget. The the line item that's in the chief's budget is just PD and you'll see that, yeah, it went up substantially. I want to thank Acting Chief Breyer and Chief Trelka for going to those meetings and really working with the sheriff's office to get those numbers down a bit, just so there, it is a big, it is a big increase, but just appreciate their work with the sheriff's office to get those those numbers down from the original estimates that we had received.
We just had one question, the drug enforcement services that you've requested from the state, is there a cost associated with that or is it truly a service?
It's a, it's a service, there is no cost associated with it.
That's great.
Thank you, chief. So you said you cut about two hundred thousand from what you have gotten from Acting Chief Breyer? Is that reflected in the current budget we have?
It should be reflected in the current budget we have, yes.
Okay, so you you brought it from there to what I'm seeing is about one point eight million?
Yes.
Okay. And so that is a about a five hundred thousand jump from twenty twenty four budget. It sounds like about a hundred and thirty thousand of that are from the E nine one one increases. What are the other increases from?
Staff, the addition of staff positions to provide what our policymakers and involved people feel is adequate to provide our law enforcement services.
So how many positions were added? Increased from twenty twenty four budget to twenty twenty five budget?
Well, can I clarify, it's not, it's not the addition of the actual positions, it's that we're going to have them filled. So the the overall budget, I don't believe, has changed in the number of positions, it's just the number we expect to have filled and win. Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, you're you're at the same number of patrol off. And you know, actually, chief, can you move a little bit maybe further to the right or the left? The the light is reflecting off of that window really badly for the folks at home. So maybe if you actually move all the way over to the lectern in the room? Yeah, hopefully the owl will follow you. It it's, it's kind of like a, it was sort of a glaring light that was a little distracting for the folks at home. So to answer your question, Councilor Tharp, so what you're, what you're seeing is when I started at the city, we had about one and a half police officers. We had one full-time officer and one part-time officer who was working full-time. And what we've done is over the years, we've, we've built up to the adequate staffing. So that's why you're going to see the the jumps from from year to year to get adequately staffed.
The last year, the last year that we did the budget, Mayor Lavey specifically highlighted that he was calculating the staff by the time that they were to be hired rather than like as if they were hired January first. So there is also an increase because of that. I still do think there is a need for conversation, given longevity of this and to see, you know, how, especially with the E nine one one increases, how reasonable is it to keep up with this demand? Given our budget limitations and plateauing of our income, I'd be really interested in having a more formal conversation about that.
Yeah, Councilmember Luna Leo, that's an excellent point. So I think we budgeted per quarter to be able to hire one or two officers per quarter in twenty twenty four. And so once you would get to the end of the year, twenty twenty four, if you were fully staffed, you'd go into twenty twenty five with all those positions filled in that budget. We're not quite there yet. But I want to give Chief Trelka a shout out that he did estimate that one of our officers probably isn't going to start right away. You know, so some of our officers are not starting right away, so one post-certified officer. So he did calculate that in and have that, that person's salary not fully put in the budget as of January one.
Which I updated earlier today at about midway through the year, we only have one vacancy with the new hire coming on board.
Okay. Does that change the, so I'm looking at the November twenty first edition of the budget, does that, would that change it? Is this more current than that?
Yes, that I just, that's that is
So actuals for twenty twenty four were about nine hundred thousand, had we been fully staffed, it would have been a million two, which was twenty twenty four budget, or was that number not including the full staff? This is the twenty twenty four budget number and then we've got a five hundred thousand dollar increase from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five.
That's a long question, but Councilmember Edwards, I think what you said is correct.
Councilmember Luna Leo, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just am wondering what the long-term viability of this is. I understand that for the time being, this works out that we're not hiring someone immediately again, quarter one. But unless we're anticipating turnover, which I mean, fair enough, I guess, but unless we're anticipating that turnover when we're thinking twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, these, you know, budget saves aren't really budget saves in the long term, they're just temporary saves. So it, you know, the budget will once again increase and yet again, I mean, obviously it's pure speculation, but assuming we maintain the same amount of revenue without an increase, at some point, we're going to, you know, hit a brick wall where we're struggling to keep up. So I just really want to highlight that long-term feasibility portion of this and highlight that that's a genuine concern of mine. Of course, not just with the police department itself, but with our entire budgets and personnel and especially like having to pay people wanting to ensure that we're reasonable to those people and of course, being physically responsible. I really do feel like we have to have that conversation and make sure that we're not, you know, tying ourselves in future years because of decisions that we're making now, if it can, if it might lead to these more, I guess, bad outcomes where we may have to fire people instead of just not hire people.
Councilmember Luna Leo, you you have hit the nail on the head in the, in the long-term strategy and planning of the city. The mayor and I had this conversation at the beginning of twenty twenty five in that we want to grow the city to be a true municipal government, providing key services to our community. And we need to look at where we have opportunity for additional economic development and revenue streams. And I want to thank you for your long-term vision in hiring assistants for our finance director so that we can truly sit down and have a financial policy for the city, which it looks at our different revenue streams, where there's opportunity, because a hundred percent, you're right, we are sales tax dependent. If that plateaus, our ability to grow the city and provide the services that are needed is 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 also going to need to take a hard look. And if we are giving up potential revenue streams or economic development opportunities, we want the bandwidth to be able to do that. So you are a hundred percent right that that is a concern globally for the city to look at where there's opportunities to look at where our revenue can grow.
Are there other questions or comments regarding the proposed police department budget? Let me see, I'll take a moment soon as I'm sure that council is done.
Yeah. I think I'm
Other comments, questions? Steve, please.
Oh, well, I have two comments. I I would really like to see the department expand instead of contract, which seems like it's somewhat doing because we're cutting one position, potential position. And I'm concerned about officer burnout. And in the past, I made a statement, I would like to see officers have a thirty two hour work week, which would be compensated as a forty hour work week. And that would definitely need more officers. One of the things I've learned in dealing with police officers in the last thirty years is that there seemed to be an element at times as officers where they're looking for action. And that has a real negative result. So I'll talk about this more later at some point, thank you kindly.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Falcone. Sorry, last comment, Laura?
And well, I just wanted to, Acting Chief Breyer's on the, or now Administrative Sergeant Breyer is on and he has been our Administrative Sergeant for many, many years and has more experience with the equipment and the grant seeking process. So I just wanted to give him an opportunity to talk about, you know, I am proud of our departments for chasing money and taking those opportunities. And so I just wanted to toss the floor to him for a second to talk about some of the grants and also where we've been smarter about our equipment. But, Breyer, can you hear me?
Okay, so equipment in general? Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Let me, okay. So equipment, like said, like was said before, the the main costs really come from, from the staffing. I mean, any, any agency you're looking at, at least seventy five percent of the budget going staffing. Equipment is something that we don't have a huge cost outlay for because we go after grants. I usually pull in at least probably ten to fifteen thousand in grants that covers most of our training needs for ammunition, basic equipment, stuff like that. The last couple of years without having a full-time chief and and somebody and and somebody that's good at writing grants, we've left conservatively, if you look at past budgets in like twenty two, twenty three, we've left conservatively several hundred thousand dollars on the table from Department of Justice grants that we've used in the past to fund a lot of our our equipment. So traditionally, we do very good in getting other people to pay for our stuff, leaving us to really hustle to find money for our people. So and I just foresee now that we're staffing up and we'll have the freedom and the the time, the luxury of time in order to go be able to pursue those grants again.
Thank you. I would like to make just kind of one other point, because one other growth in this budget is in the vehicles. Since we switched to enterprise, a lot of the priority for swapping out the vehicles is the police vehicles. And we may recall a number of conversations in the past about inoperable police vehicles or very expensive repairs for these vehicles that were old with low mileage, but still we were making loose cannons on. So now that enterprise is in, is involved for fleet management, some of these costs will will kind of be higher upfront as we focus on on bringing in critical functional police vehicles. And then I would anticipate that we'll kind of get into a steady state with vehicle replacement. Is
Absolutely, that's the goal. And it'll, it'll help across departments too for purposes of budgeting so that we're, we're not having vehicles that are going out of commission and urgently needing to be replaced, we'll have things on a schedule.
Yeah. Okay. Well, if there are no other comments, I'd like to move on to the administration budget.
Okay.
Thank you, chief, thank you. Officer Breyer?
All right, so I wanted to highlight a few things. We're, we're, we labeled it administration, but technically on your, on your budgets at City Hall. And you know, where we want to improve municipal services, I want to tell you, we're also trying to make them more efficient and more cost-saving. So want to highlight a few of the things that you have done as the city council throughout this year to address that. We bundled our telecom with Granite, if you remember that, we signed that contract just recently. And that's been really helpful, I want to thank our finance department manager and Ms. Bushman as well, our deputy city clerk for really working on getting that, it was a bigger lift than we thought to bundle our telecom, it'll save us about five thousand dollars a year estimated. And hopefully in some of the lines we are no longer using, hopefully that is a savings to us of about five thousand. Small things, I want to highlight the city council, thank you very much for going to surfaces instead of paper packets. Our copier costs have decreased significantly and you may not see that from as much from this past year to this year or next year, but your efforts in doing that overall, if you look at your packets, your packets are anywhere between two and four hundred pages and we're no longer printing those out. You're getting those electronically. So we also went with PK Digital, who does our IT. So that is Dan Rabenowitz, IT Dan. We are going forward with the new copier for downstairs and upstairs at City Hall, which will be more cost-effective for us for the equipment and also for per copy costs. So I'm hoping that that will also save us about five thousand dollars per year, and these are estimates. I want to thank our administrative assistant, Brianna Ortiz, for working on the EV charging station. So you know, the city put that in with a grant. And what we found was that we were losing money on that. We were paying more in electricity than we were getting per kilowatt hour. And so Ms. Ortiz did the work to adjust that so that, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I think we are closer to market rate, which is it is a per kilowatt hour, we were about fifteen cents below where we should have been. And then the kilowatt, cost per kilowatt hour will be adjusted based upon time of day. So it is, it will be higher during high-peak tourism hours and less potentially when our locals, you're using it. And then there will also be a charge if, once you finish charging, if you leave your vehicle there. So I appreciate that effort. I think that it is much nicer to break even on that than to lose money. One other thing I wanted to mention on the vehicles, so you all, we signed up and entered into a contract with Enterprise. And if you recall, one of the vehicles, there were twelve vehicles we were going to prioritize. And one of them was going to be City Hall. And I want to thank staff for pointing out to me that we can save some money. We are putting off that new City Hall vehicle until twenty twenty six. So I've let Enterprise know that we do not need that vehicle in twenty twenty five, we're going to make do with the Yukon. It's running, so we're going to keep that vehicle and put that cost off to twenty twenty six. I just want to appreciate staff because a lot of times we'll sit in our department heads meeting and they will identify ways that we can save money here and there. We want to do a lot with our our city, we've done a lot this year as far as transparency. So we're looking at, we redid the website to be legally compliant, but also to offer more transparency. We're doing the news We're doing the newsletter. Um, we're doing some things e- essentially to better the services that we're providing. But I also want to highlight the ways we're trying to save the city money. Uh, I, I, I have two options now that we can do. Uh, we can, I can ask, uh, to pull up the actual City Hall budget. We can share a screen and you can ask questions about particular line items. One of the issues that I think one of the questions that came up is, uh, City Hall has gone down um, in some sense because of staff. And that is because we have created additional departments, right? So planning started out in City Hall budget, HR started out in City Hall budget, and now those departments are, are uh, be truly becoming standalone departments. And so you're going to see those changes. Uh, the, the last thing I'm going to tell you is, this is one of the things that's hard to budget for. You're probably going to see this at the end of twenty-twenty-four. Uh, when we had those catastrophic events at the Tabor Home with the flooding and the leaks, eight oh nine Spruce, we had some leaks at City Hall. I remember I was joking, we were the Bellagio. Those, those claims are going to get paid, but you will see that in the twenty-twenty-four expenses for City Hall. So what you'll see is you'll see those hitting in twenty-twenty-four expenses. You'll also see it hitting in revenue because the Sursar Insurance Company is going to pay us for those except for our deductible. So that skews things. If you're looking at twenty-twenty-four actuals, that's going to skew the picture a, a little bit. And so with those highlights, uh, I don't know if you want us to pull up City Hall so we can, um, look at it? Or if you would just like to, at this point, I'm happy to answer questions.
Questions for the city administrator?
Seems like there's a significant decrease in the admin budget. Is that due to the full-time FTE moving to the planning department from the admin?
So under the admin budget, uh, HR was cost there.
Okay.
As well as, uh, the technical issue, not under the city. The city administrator's budget, um, and one half of the admin system goes there. So those departments have been broken out.
So they're in different places in the budget now?
Yes, planning is a standalone department and we've created the standalone for HR.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
There's a light item for operating expenses, which is just described as other. You tell us what that other is. It's a twenty-eight thousand. It's, it's about a three-time increase.
Can you give us the, the item?
One forty-six, six, two, oh, five.
Description might.
It's literally just listed as other in parentheses.
One, one forty-six, oh, one forty-six?
Yes, two oh five. It is just underneath postage, operating expenses.
Uh, it is. It's not, uh, wrapping the text. So it's janitorial services, um, that we pay, uh, Delhi to clean City Hall twice a week.
Good.
Uh, and then we had a miscellaneous operating or it's just miscellaneous operating that were moved from other. I've gotten rid of the other line item so that we can track those a little better with what our costs are.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. Any questions?
Another question, street lighting is listed in two different places in the budget. It is under the, the City Hall. Is that just the utility bill? It's listed out and hasn't changed dramatically, but it's forty thousand dollars proposed. But there are two different light items for street lighting. So I don't know if this one is just, is this just a utility bill or is this?
Where is the other?
Um.
Under which?
Councilmember Edwards, I think I asked that question when we were going over that and, um, we can have Ms. Hewlett verify it. I do believe you're accurate that it is the utilities. And, uh, that we, it, it would be all of the city's street lighting and then the, we did have, I believe, in the City Hall budget, some capital put aside also for the lighting specifically. I think it was specifically on Harrison. So that may be the two different lines that you see in the City Hall budget. Uh, but Ms. Hewlett, can you, I think I, I think we asked that question and you looked it up when you and I and the mayor were meeting, and that one is, is the utilities?
Uh, yes, it looks like it's specifically.
And one for capital improvements for street lighting, like our repairs that we have to do this year. And I'm sorry, I, I'm not seeing the second line item, but I know it exists in the budget, but it's in a different department.
I think it was in the streets department. Um, and I think that has probably been capital. Yeah, so the one under streets protection is based on the an- annual maintenance of lighting. But I don't think that is necessarily, uh, specific to any location, just more who's, who's doing.
And I think that was based upon some estimates we had received previously about replacing some of that, um, infrastructure on Harrison. Because those are the ones that we are, um, responsible for. Some of the other fixtures throughout town are Excel Energies.
So the forty thousand dollar line item under City Hall is just the utilities, just the.
Yes.
Okay.
And that tracks would be phenomenally high electric bills that he signed.
Phenomenal, that is right. Thank you.
Yeah.
For the clarification.
Comments, questions? Questions at this time, Steve? I'll take the comment.
Okay, so does Zeitz Park, uh, utilities on that bill? Okay, so some time ago, I turned into the city, the fact that there was a, um, in the Zeitz Park bathrooms, the easternmost one, I could see daylight coming between the ceiling and the, uh, eastern wall on the north end of it. And it, I don't know, it seemed like there's two foot or so of daylight. So that heat's just evaporating out through that building like that.
Thank you for bringing that up. I said, thank you for bringing that up.
We'll bring it up again.
I need a reminder now and again, for sure. All the comments, questions?
I have a general budget question.
Go ahead, please.
So the November twenty-first budget, which we got in our email, it looked like there was a two-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-dollar deficit. And now this version, which we've got a hard copy here, um, it's balanced.
It is. Um, if, if you're ready to move on from the administration. Yeah, um, I think, would you guys want to swap and talk about balanced budget strategy before we talk about ARCA funding allocations? Since it sort of fits.
That feels appropriate to me.
All right. Okay, let's pop on to general budget, overall budget. Um, if you will notice, in the revenues on the general fund, the sheet, um, there is a line item that has been added to the budget, um, to transfer from the general fund budget are balanced. This is the only way to balance the budget without further cut. So just to show you.
Which line item is that question?
Um, it is, uh, line, well, it's eighty-five in my spreadsheet. Um, it is account number zero-one, three-hundred-nine, zero, zero. It will be end of general fund. And I don't think it was on, uh, the one from the twenty-first. I added it to this spreadsheet. So we had deficit of two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-three-sixty-three, um, with some, we have some additions, um. They were the, uh, listed to include for, um, grants. Um, there is some revenue to offset those, but again, we, matching that, so it's not fully, um, a hundred percent funded through the grant. Um, so that changed that. I did, um, as I mentioned earlier, reduce one of the officers, the vacant, the one vacancy that we have, um, to hiring about a year. So it reduced it. It's just been fluctuating.
So we have to take the two-hundred-and-sixty-five-three-sixty-three out of the reserve to balance this budget? And what does that leave us with as a reserve?
Um, excuse me, let me pull up the.
Probably, uh, five million or above five million. Because.
Overall, not in the, not in the general fund. Um, the general fund, I believe, let me, I'm going to pull up.
Well, his question was, how much does it leave us in reserve? I think, uh, Councilmember Hill is your question, how much does it leave us in reserve or how much does it leave us in the general fund?
I'd like the answer to both, please.
Yeah, let's see your both.
Okay, so our reserves are comprised of the investments that you made this year in the Colorado Trust. And then what we have in our, uh, uh, you know, our community bank's account. And I believe, um, I believe we have. Ms. Hewlett, maybe you can tell us exactly what we've got invested in Colorado Trust? Because as of today, before I did payroll, we had about eight-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand dollars in our community bank's bank account. And then, uh, Colorado Trust. I can't remember how if we've, that's almost. Do we put almost four million in that?
It's close to that. Um, so our ending fund balance for the audit was three-point-five million in the general fund. Um, and I'm projecting, hold on, it's really hard when I don't have multiple screens up. We're going to have to have any meetings. And that's what I was going off, this was spaced out because we know that's a hard number and, uh, we don't know what we're going to need a year at this time. Um, and it tends to fluctuate year to year. It's very, it's very slow to scroll through a lot of this. Which it should be on the last page of that handout as well, is projections. Um. So on current estimates for twenty-four, um, we're looking at maybe a two-hundred-thousand-dollar increase to fund balance for, uh, this fiscal year.
Is that the Color Trust, Colorado Trust, um, interest we burned?
This, so what impacts your, your fund balance is your net for this year. So the three-point-five million is from inception to the end of twenty-three. Once we close twenty-four and we've gone through the audit, then whatever that net amount in is rolls up to that fund balance and it either is going to increase it or decrease. So that is what I'm going off of is being in our reserves. Um, that is, um, that is total. Um, we do have some restricted, uh, reserves in there. Not much, but just, just so you know, um, if I can get to the right. Sorry, I didn't anticipate pulling up the audit.
So to answer Councilmember Tharp's question, it's, it's our overall work this year to keep expenses in check and also to, uh, you know, look at additional revenue such as the Colorado Trust. But it's the combination of everything. By the end of the year, we're, we're coming out, you know, whatever it is, two sixty-five in the positive.
Um, so our unassigned fund balance, uh, for twenty-three, for just the general one, funds three-point-one million is what we have on balance, is unrestricted. We have some, and therefore, uh, animal shelter capital improvements, uh, some for paving, um, emergencies, um, and then there was some prepaid expenses at the end of twenty-three. So you're going to hate me visualizing this way because I know that accounting-wise, it's not correct. But if we finish this year, two-hundred-something thousand ahead, then mentally. The net impact. The net impact will be.
And you mean ahead of budget or do you mean revenues over expenditures?
I mean, we will have expended two-hundred-some-odd-thousand dollars less than what we budgeted for twenty-twenty-four. As a net, that would impact.
Did our revenues hit, were they we totally anticipated?
Uh, slightly, slightly less. Our revenues are slightly less, but our expenses are also down because of, you know, positions we hadn't filled. So in the end, uh, yeah, the mayor's, the mayor's right. We're going to come out to s- some hundred and some in the positive, and that's not to budget. It is actuals.
And we were talking about the general fund at this point, correct?
Correct.
There is another one-time credit from High Country Developers for two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. So that's over and above this two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-dollar deficit that we're proposing.
That, that is in, um, in the revenues as well. I was instructed to.
Well, I understand that, but that's not a recurring revenue. That's a one-time.
Yes.
We, we are getting a one-time bonus, but if we didn't add that one-time bonus, we would be talking about a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar draw. Correct? I'm, I'm thinking about this correctly.
Yes.
That doesn't seem appropriate to me, but I understand it. I understand where it's placed.
Yeah, and I think, uh, there's, that's the, that's the rub that we spent all spring talking about. You know, I, I think we spent a lot of time talking about the city's revenues and, uh, the need for a sales tax. And we're, what we're, we're saying is we are trying to run a municipal government, and if we're projecting flat sales tax, uh, y- you're, you're going to have to keep making harder and harder choices. And so without having the opportunity for your finance director and me and the mayor to sit down and look at additional revenue, yeah, th- these are going to be harder and harder choices every year.
If things stay.
So, so we can understandably expect that sales tax revenues stay flat or decrease as Mayberry County said budgeted for twenty-twenty-five. What are our other opportunities for revenue? Or do we really need to be having those harder conversations right now?
Our other opportunities for revenue in terms of longer-term planning are considering the city sales tax as we have.
Of course.
And focusing on economic development to grow the pie.
And grants.
And grants. And I, well, I can talk to you about grants later. Yeah, and grants and better.
And, and all of these.
And, and, and more exploration of available grants because we have not had the staff or the bandwidth to, to really focus on other sources of revenue like that.
And that makes sense. And then we've discussed several times trying to figure out how to fund a grant writer specifically for that reason. With all of the consternations we've had with high country developers, what are the chances that this anticipated windfall doesn't actually pay? Or doesn't actually pay this year?
I will yield to our city administrator on that.
Uh, well, I, I'm not kind, I don't want to get into too much of the weeds on this, but. This is money that high country developers owes the city for the construction of Mountain View Drive and, and the. Issue, so we're talking to our city attorney about ways to recoup that money and. I think there's a, there are several pathways to recoup that money by the end of twenty twenty five.
Well, and I guess that's my point is, we are actually having to talk to our attorney to figure out ways to recoup that money, it's not. It's not guaranteed income at this point. So it seems to me that we don't need to be looking at as guaranteed income, we need to be looking at as. Two hundred thousand, two hundred and ten thousand dollars on top of our current negative. Budget.
Well, truly, all of our protect, all of our projections are our estimates.
Understand completely, but we can expect to be sales tax. Right? Regular, relatively regularly, but this is a one time. Potentially landmine ridden, one that we are counting on just to make our budget. More powerful.
Well, I just wanted to emphasize on this that, that, that at some point we are going to collect it. It is a debt that's owed to the city by contract. So. At some point, you're, you're gonna have to collect it and, and without getting into too much of the legal details. We're, we're going to pursue collecting it by the end of twenty twenty five.
I, I understand that, and I think you made my point, thank you very much.
I want to, I wanna go to Councilmember Lou Laia, your hand is up, sir.
Yeah, I, I know that we have had this discussion in previous times, but just also wanted to highlight. The fees when we do charge for a service regardless of what licensing it is or any other type of fee, I feel like. That's an area where we could grow potentially and capture a more appropriate amount of effort that we put into it. I know that there was an intention to do that this year and I'm not sure if that fully got realized. And I know we're talking pennies here, but at this point, I feel like. Given our short term. Approach to this currently, it feels like that'd be an appropriate area to look forward to in terms of growth. But more importantly, to the current budget. I guess what? What decision are we looking at to make this the difficult one, like what's staff recommendation? What, where are we being geared towards in general by? Like, is it the short term realization of we just pay through the, through our. The reserves and then call it good? Is that like the plan? Of course, realizing that we're probably gonna have to try to find new revenue ways moving forward. Or is there also an additional plan to cut more long term costs alongside with this? I guess, I know that's a bit of a mouthful of a question, but I can restate it if it needs to be restated.
And I can answer and, and break it up into parts because you're, you're thinking along the same lines that we are, so part of the reason I met with Route County. Was to talk to them about their big athletic race that they have and how do they manage that from a lot of different perspectives and. You know, we've had on our temporary use permit, a line to request payment back for law enforcement and. And streets. And we had a, a film permit, I think maybe some of you remember from Ford, they came up and shot and. They said, great, who do we write the check to? You know, how much do we need to owe, how much do we owe you for your law enforcement? And so we build them back for our law enforcement time and our streets time. And so that is something we're gonna look at going forward, we, we haven't been doing that. But frankly, I think it's time to not subsidize our for profit entity and where we're looking at making some hard decisions. So, you know, many other entities charge per hour for law enforcement. So for example, when we got help from Avon Pitkin and, and. Aspen, they charge us seventy five bucks an hour for law enforcement. And so many communities charge for that, so you're gonna see a revised fee schedule. We did up some of that revenue for twenty twenty six, but we probably need to take a, a harder look at all. You know, we, we aim for nonprofit events, but we probably need to look at. Covering more of our out of pocket costs for some of the. Uh, temporary use permits. And then absolutely getting to the bigger picture, you know, you're hearing about retail strategies. And potentially investing money into economic development. It is absolutely critical if we are going to continue to provide a level of service that we look at at those additional. Revenue streams and it, at, in sales tax. I, my strong position is we don't need more people visiting Leadville. We need the people who visit Leadville to have the opportunity to leave their money here. We have plenty of people coming, but they're buying their groceries elsewhere, they're staying elsewhere, so we receive them as visitors. But they don't have as much opportunity to leave their income here, so I would like to take a hard look at some of those strategies because. Look, we only have so many levers to pull. You're absolutely right, we can cut or we can grow. And we need to explore the opportunities to look at whether or not we pass a sales tax, a city sales tax. How do we grow the existing sales tax that we receive from tourists? And how do we look at saving money and being more efficient and it's all a package?
It is important we look at economic development, of course, it is also important that we understand that this is a long term strategy, there is no. Turnaround in twenty twenty five, it's, this is something we're looking at on a ten year basis. We're also still seeing several budgets that are. E- even higher than were proposed a couple of weeks ago that we're not taking a hard look at right now. Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Crystal, is the interest from the Colorado Trust funds represented in here specifically?
It is.
Where is that?
It's line nine, zero one, three zero zero, thirty five hundred.
Your budget at one twenty five and our actions this year look like we're gonna come out something close, don't they?
I'm estimating based on what I had through October. A hundred and four, so I'm just kind of watching.
That seems fair, based on interest rates.
I think when we, when we initially met for the first budget work session, we discussed the revenues. At that time, without any of, any of the additional items that have been placed in there. Was that, you know, revenues are going to stay relatively flat. There is, you know, with, with staffing increases with filling vacancies. F P P has gone up for police and fire to ten and a half percent. Insurance went up. Health insurance, medical insurance went up. Seven percent that is shared with the employees. And then we did include the, the cola and merit in there at roughly five percent overall, so.
Are the cola and merit increases the same across the board for every city department or does that change based on department?
No, it's placed in the budget overall. With the exception of fire because there's, there increases are. But otherwise.
Outside of the fire department, it's, it's a. Even handed across the board.
Yes.
And what is our goal to have in reserve? What is the? You know, general amount we wanna have in reserve?
G O A recommends two months. Revenue or expenditures.
And what would that number two months be? That seems low.
It is low, I do not recommend it, we have. It doesn't make me feel comfortable, I don't like that. Financials. I, I believe we're sitting at right about six months, so if there was some, something that the world shut down again. We have time to plan, you know, revenue is not going to be cut off.
And that number you're talking about, that six month number that we have now is about five point two million, is that correct?
I think overall.
Overall, and that's what you're counting for your six month?
Yeah, and if you look at your overall budget number, I, I can scroll to the end, but your overall budget for twenty twenty five is. What, seven, seven million? And I can do that right now and, and if we have in reserve around, you know, plus or minus five. We're, we are well ahead of what the Colorado Municipal League recommends, so that question I definitely asked. At budgeting one oh one at the last C M L conference. And their recommendation was a hundred days. And so, you know, that's in line with what our finance director is, is saying, I agree. That is, uh, it's not a lot of time.
So Lori, just big picture, C M L says a hundred days, we have. Six months worth. And, and we're potentially taking one of those months away. Based on our current budget, if I include that extra two hundred and ten thousand dollars. So we go from a six month reserve to a five month reserve based on the proposed budget. That seems like a substantial change to me.
Yeah, but if you look at where we are though, we're gonna, we're finishing out. I, I think that we covered those numbers just a second ago, twenty twenty four with two sixty five.
Sixty five thousand dollars ahead, yes ma'am, I understood that. Which means for all intents and purposes, we work even.
Not sixty five, two hundred and stop and change.
Yeah, and, and also remember where we are on this is, is many of these expenses, so. You know, there may be opportunity to, as the year goes on. Get a grant to cover some of these expenses, there may be an opportunity to save money, we're always looking at opportunities to save. Your budget is your projection. And so it's our best estimate. But we're always looking to come in, you know, at or under budget or as close as we can to budget, so. You know, if there's opportunities where we can cut back by, you know, fifty thousand dollars here or there. We, we are not gonna pass up those opportunities.
So, it sounds like the game plan is, generally speaking. We use our reserves currently to kind of subsidize for it, assuming that we. Increase revenues one way or another, we're working towards that, towards the fees, that's the reliable, easy, low paying fruit in my opinion. And you mentioned increase in sales tax, I don't disagree and clearly there is an appetite for. Increase of sales tax even in a wide perception, given the most recent election. Uh, but. I guess my concern is, I personally don't like budgeting off of a. We'll find out and see if this happens. And what are we actively doing to make sure it does happen, you know? Are we already drafting language to potentially run something on the ballot? Are we prepping a campaign strategy, like what is it that we. Can or are or will do to succeed in the increase of revenue captured? I don't necessarily disagree that we have the, the people or the incoming revenue if we have a tax. But like. Have we already started drafting those plans for next year? Have we already started drafting the? What the, you know, tax will be for will be infrastructure, you know what I mean? Like, those are the questions that I want to have answered before I feel comfortable dipping into reserves. For personnel specifically, I know we've done one offs a lot. In various different ways to the point where they don't really feel like one offs. But when it comes to putting like someone's livelihood on a budget. I guess I want a little more assurances than we've had before that we have a strategy, a. Like a good, you know, successful planned out strategy to. Ensure that we can increase those revenues to keep up with it. Or at the very least that there's some sort of expectation set there that, you know, we're trying to do this, but if we don't, this might be what happens. That's kind of where I feel coming into this budget this year. And I'm okay with taking that risk because we have the, the fallback for it, we have the reserves for it seemingly. But it, the risk also means we should go in with a very strong plan and that's something that. I, I would like to hear a little bit more of what that strong plan is to increase those revenues.
Well, I think that's policy wise, very much up to the city council, I mean, I think there was a, a decision to not run a sales tax. So I think at council's request, we can certainly put that discussion on an early agenda. Uh, in, uh, in twenty twenty five. I would love for y'all to pass a contract with retail strategies, like I said, there, I reported on the food access summits. Uh, information and input regarding that, I think that is a key to economic development for us. Uh, we, we need to start planning now. I know it's a long term plan, but if we don't start doing something now, we're gonna be in the same boat in a couple of years and so. I ask also that you free me up to do these tasks. Uh, we've had so much on our plates, we've had so many things thrown at us that. You know, frankly, uh, your finance director and I have not been freed up. Uh, to do these kinds of things and without that bandwidth. Uh, we, we are, we are doing the best we can. Uh, I really, really think we need to have the continued sales tax discussion. So if council wants that on the beginning of the agenda for in, in January, we're happy to start that discussion again. My recommendations would be the same. Um, that we approach it in the same methodical thoughtful way we did before. And figure out if, what the appetite is for something like that.
I guess my question then goes to council, does council, the rest of council feel like that's something? In our cards for future, if an increase in revenue via sales tax?
It isn't the cards, but it's more than a year away, we did, would definitely want to start planning it in January.
Could someone remind me what the. The restriction on running in consecutive years that was county only, so we're not restricted from running.
The only, uh, council, uh, uh, council member, the only restriction is I, I'm recalling that we are not allowed to run it the same year as county.
That's right.
More coordination with the county because there already is talk of them. Running some sort of tax for the rec center, at least that's in the. Survey they sent out, the different options.
Now we can't run a sales tax at the same time or any tax at the same time?
They're doing like a district.
And to that point, Tim, if there is an opportunity to work with the county to perhaps continue our previous I G A's. Though I don't know how likely that is in terms of sales tax where the revenue capture within the cities goes to the city. Certainly a conversation we can have, I don't know if there is any potential appetite for that and I, I guess given the tax. The, the tax, it might not even make sense, but I think it's worthwhile to try to approach the county if that's what the county's gonna do. If not to have them at the table. Uh, for whatever we may end up doing anyways, so. Regardless of how that one shapes out, it seems like we should have those conversations the sooner. That way we can be prepped for the years to come.
We can always revitalize the sales ta- tax task force and maybe we should just call it. Sales tax standing committee, that way we can have it easier to pronounce and just keep it for as long as we need.
That was my initial ask.
Question for the city administrator and the mayor, you guys have been working really hard on this, you've cut a tremendous amount out of the budget already, it's come down. Question for the city administrator and the mayor, you guys have been working really hard on this, you've cut a tremendous amount out of the budget already, it's come down. Pretty drastically, if we truly wanted to pass a balanced budget, what is there left to cut, what would it take? To bring it down to zero. I'm sure you guys have had this discussion, what? What is it that you decided it wasn't worth? What was it that you decided it was worth drawing down funds in order to keep in the budget that would be next on the block?
Well, the number one thing you you've heard from everybody is that our people are the most important asset we have. And uh, I uh, would not support. Any um, decreases in salary or elimination of positions, that is my hill to die on. Uh, we've done such an amazing job of building up our staffs, you've heard from. Uh, fire chief, police chief, your streets department, we are finally, finally. After all these years getting fully staffed in some of these departments. So if you wanna, I think, you know, we've heard it, that our biggest costs is our people. And uh, I am not willing to put our people on the chopping block.
I understand that, so what would go on the chopping block? Would it be the community center, what what other items are there out there that are not personnel based? That could be taken out of the budget without affecting city services preferably, uh, or affecting personnel?
Well, the community center, y- yeah, your community center is not gonna balance your budget, because uh, that we are two. Two hundred some, uh, and the community center ask is.
What else, what else would there be, and I'm not thinking it's one thing, I would think it would be a combination of things, but what have you guys discussed?
Uh, everything's been on the table, I I I think that if your only way to get down to what you're saying is. Uh, no raises, no, no cola, and cutting positions.
Well, and I think even, uh, cause I had asked that question to our finance director, like what if we, what if we did no? Increase in salary across the board, and it saved us a really small amount. And it was, I was surprised.
The animal shelter budget went up once again from what was proposed a couple of weeks ago. Are there some capital improvements in there that I'm not aware of, why did that go up one more time?
We did, I did get um. The insurance uh, for a penable for workers coming this way, which can only that.
Well, no, in insurance and health insurance costs skyrocket, but that certainly makes sense, and and we have worked super hard on. Building our staffs and building some support for our staff, that makes perfect sense too. What am I, what are we missing, what else is there? I mean, other than calling out specifically something like the community center for another feasibility study, what else is there that could be cut, or are you saying that? It's done unless we directly affect uh, employees.
And try to little down as much as we can with the pregnant.
So there's really nothing else there?
Is it worth talking about? Is it worth talking about eight oh nine spruce street? I don't think that's ever functioned as intended.
Well, we have, we have four planes on it, so that potentially. Helps us get it back up and running, but it it hasn't run in, it hasn't run at full capacity to my knowledge since we acquired it. Uh, and we have spent a year with one tent, of course, several new and additional repairs. But not necessarily even because it's an old house, you know, some of that was because of site wise, but. It is still a, it's a liability to the city, that we can't seem to capitalize on.
I feel like my concern, yeah, my concern is that I don't feel like that's a liability, I think that's a pretty. Harsh word to describe an opportunity for us to transition in uh, uh, staff who we have used that for. Uh, that purpose before um, to transition in staff, very adequate staff into our community. I, in fact, I don't think this really gets to the heart of the problem whatsoever, I think focusing on these niche cuts. Really just distracts from the real issue, um, uh, which is like long term viability, and yes. I I understand eight oh nine spruce would be a nice increase in revenue, but that's temporary, and if we're tinking, if we're trying to think of this long term. If we're trying to think of this in terms of what's going to save our ass five, six, seven years from now. I like eight oh nine spruce isn't gonna cut it one way or another. Uh, community center, at at least at this point, isn't gonna cut it one way or another, we're talking about, at at this point, what I'm hearing is. Uh, if we don't wanna sacrifice in personnel, then we have to go the revenue option. And if we want a balanced budget for this year, uh, based off the feedback that I heard from both staff, um, and. It sounds like the mayor, after meeting with them, it would be subsidize it from our backup funds for this year. With a plan to increase revenues, some very easy, low paying in fruit ways, some a little bit more difficult ways. Um, but it, that's, that's kind of the read that I'm getting, and I think focusing in on these more niche cuts kind of distracts from that. Point of view that at some point, we're gonna have to have this difficult discussion if we don't capture those revenues, which is unfortunately personnel cuts. I think freezing budgets is the wrong approach completely, um, because it's a very temporary solution. That probably wouldn't even work in that temporary um, a- area, unless we were to also include budget cuts. Um, or staff personnel cuts on top of that seemingly. So that's kind of my thought process of this is, okay, we're in a situation where. Personnel's our biggest cost. And either we beef up to catch up to that, or we have to cut on the services we offer. And to me, what are those services that we're willing to cut on? Um, Lori, I think you made it clear that uh, none of them is your stance currently, and I think that's fair. Um, but if we were to push comes to shove. I I mean, what is it, you know, what what's our big ticket items, is it the animal shelter, it seems that's pretty low to me, is it the police department? I understand that there's concerns about wanting to cut that. Um, I, you know, that that's the conversation that I feel like is most important here. Um, if we are to have a balancing budget conversation, rather than creating short term solutions to this more long term problem.
But I I heard what you said, Christian, and I agree with some of it, although I don't think I view the sale of. Potential sale of eight oh nine spruce street as a um, short term fix, or it's a huge capital investment. I can't remember what the city paid for eight hundred thousand, maybe it's worth more now. If we gave eight hundred thousand or a million dollars to Crystal, she could generate quite a bit of revenue on an annual basis off of that investment. And right now it feels like a big drain to me.
Eight oh nine spruce, eight oh nine spruce doesn't, it it breaks even, I mean, I I I, and it's not a liability in any sense that. We don't have a mortgage on it, uh, you know, our, uh, essentially, the the rent can cover the utilities. It was not in, it was intended to provide housing. And has served that need for us, and in fact, one of the things that we offered in our police recruitment package, one of the first questions. Kara W. asked us is, do you have housing? And the ability to say yes is a huge factor. And so, you know, I think having that um, back online, I I agree with council member Luna Lial. That if you sell it, it's gone, and you know, the the investment of that money. Uh, it's not going to be invested, it's gonna be potentially what you're saying is gonna be spent. And so I think that that, uh, it's like the point that. Council member Edwards was making about the one time, it's a one time, you know, rail yards is a one time uh, hit. You know, and after that, it's uh, we we might be in the same boat. The real issue is we need to get to root of the problem, which is consistent, steady stream of income. And that is the issue where we're either needing to look at a sales tax, other streams of revenue or economic development. Having that steady stream of income is way easier to budget around than these, than a, than a one time influx, and. That's this point that council member Edwards was trying to make about the rail yards, that money coming in is one time.
That being the point, there's another line item on the budget about. Disposing of city property uh, for a lot in Twin Lakes, can you tell us a little bit more about that and what potentially that's actually worth? To add that to our revenue?
Yeah, so this is something that um, has been on my to do list for a while. Uh, we have been um, willed mayor, was it willed or deeded?
It may have been willed, but gifted overall.
Yeah, gifted a a lot of property out at Twin Lakes. And uh, we don't have a a need for a a lot out at Twin Lakes. And so it's been on my to do list for probably about a year to to bring to. Uh, the idea of potentially selling that uh, piece, that parcel. And uh, looking at doing something better with that money, and. So the, it's hard to know, the 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 value of the property has gone up. I, uh, Ms. Hewlett, how much should we put is an estimated for that, I think we put it in on the low end?
I think a hundred thousand is what is in the line item, and then we had um, added for um, the sale of.
Yeah, there was a second one as well.
Police cruisers, I believe.
Which should be a small amount, but that's, but that's, that's three hundred thousand or a bit over three hundred thousand in in one time bumps to our.
I would also add, you know, like in our budget, there are a number of vehicle payments that are nearing the end. And so those are also not one time, but limited time, so.
But those, but those happen over and over again, over a period of years, of course, and so.
They do, but when we decide to to go into a lease payment, we we look at our budget at that time. Um, so we're committed to paying off those leases, of course, but they're, they're gonna be done um, in two more years. And that is approximately a hundred thousand dollars worth of.
No, that's, that's great, and that'll be a savings with a new master lease, uh, but vehicles will always be an expense on our budget.
They will be, but we get to make those decisions, what to proceed with, with our budget at that time.
Understood, thank you.
Um, I I went back um, a couple of years on the uh, audits, just to kind of see. The fluctuation of fund balance to see if that might be helpful. Um, and from twenty one to twenty, from twenty to twenty one. We increased fund balance in the, in the general fund, I'm speaking of, um, by almost seven hundred and thirty six thousand. Uh, it increased again from twenty one to twenty two by five hundred fourteen thousand. Um, we did see a decrease in that, the general fund by two hundred fifty eight thousand, so. Uh, you know, about half of what we built up in the previous year. So um, you know, I don't know if that helps to take anything into consideration that we 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 did, we have but money and. And to draw against it, it's just gonna kind of ebb and flow.
No, thank you.
I mean, I don't, I don't think that's helpful, but I did wanna see how that.
And do we know if those fund balances increased because we sold an asset that we were able to capitalize on, or do we know if it was just?
It it wouldn't have been, it wouldn't have been the sale of a, it wouldn't have been the sale of a, an asset like land or anything like that. Because that would have gone before you. Uh, generally, if you look at the additions in city hall, you know, when I got to city hall, there were. Essentially mayor and one and a half, uh, what, two employees. And if you look at what we've built, and the fact that we've, we've been building a municipal government. And, you know, managing to to try and stay as close as possible to our budgets and and. Uh, increase our general fund and kind of try and maintain our reserves. Uh, I, you know, I think. The number of departments we've built. And the fact that we're, you know, we're still, I, you know, I I think the estimates are between three and five million dollars in reserve. Um, we're in a healthy financial position, and and the city doesn't owe money, we've not bonded. You know, we owe on a street sweeper and what else?
A fire. There's like, there's a raid.
And I, I, you know, like, I appreciate the the caution here, I think, you know, I, and thank you for acknowledging all the. The cutting work that that we have done, I think we can continue to move into this year functioning much more efficiently. Um, possibly using that efficiency as a growth. But I, I think if we had been seeing year after year after year, where we're like, we're not quite making it, we're not quite making it, we're not quite making it. Is much more informative in terms of like, do we need to shrink? You know, do we need to make these some significant cuts? I think a a single year with the thought that, you know, A. I I don't know what is gonna happen, we're projecting flat, the state demographic's office is a little bit more optimistic than I am. Um, but I think, I think this is not a. This is not a, a deal breaker amount to dip into reserves, assault is doing it, other communities who are projecting flat. Revenues, and what I would say is, this is, this is a piece of data. And next year, we will see if we have a repeat of that piece of data, and that would be, to me. Assigned to say, okay, it's, it's really time to 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 shrink more as a municipal government.
Thank you, just to be clear, two years potentially of a pandemic bump, and then a cost against our. Uh, uh, against our funds last year, a cost against our funds this year.
Increase, we have, we have money going back into the general fund this year, that's like the two.
Last year, last year was a decrease.
But two prior years were increases.
Okay, we've had one decrease, then this year we have a little bit of money coming back in. We can truly anticipate revenues dropping, right, maximum staying flat next year. With a clear eyed perspective, I understand that there are certainly rosier perspectives than mine.
I know, I think you and I are the bottom of the barrel.
This scares me to death, yes, absolutely.
But I mean. Then nothing changes, we don't find a way to increase revenues, right?
Oh, no, absolutely, and and a lot of these expenses are gonna be massive expenses, this isn't a couple of hundred thousand dollars, these are million dollar. Multi million dollar things like streets. Uh, and we do have to plan for that, but we need to be careful, we are talking about increasing revenues. Nothing we've discussed would impact our revenues this next year, they certainly would for twenty six and twenty seven, but they will not impact them this year. And I just wanna make sure that we have thought about that.
Council member Luna Lial.
Yeah, uh, uh, well, I wanted to highlight something that we did talk through at the task force, um, when we had it. Um, and that is that Lake County and Leadville are relatively low. Um, at least compared to our uh, immediate uh, uh, I guess neighbors. Um, and generally our geographic area of the mountain regions, in terms of our sales tax. So there is definitely opportunity to grow there and be more competitive to our neighbors. And capitalize on the tourism especially, uh, you know, when you look at like S S Park and other such similarly sized uh. Areas, you definitely do have a significantly higher uh, sales tax than. Uh, less reliant areas, so I do think it's important that we do highlight then have that. Knowledgement of like, hey, there is opportunity, a healthy opportunity to grow here. You, and even if we were to stay flat in the sense of, there isn't more people spending more money. But the same amount of people spending the same amount of money, or whatever mixture of that is, uh, there is still potential to grow in terms of revenue as a city there. Um, with the full understanding that, yes, we are dipping into reserves, and it's like inherently a risk, because we're not. We're not being conservative to it, we're being proactive in saying that, yes, we will be able to recapture these, uh, as you always said, in the future year. And and I think that's the most important part of this question is, uh, do we have faith in that plan? And wanna work through that plan, or do we take the more conservative approach right now and retract? I personally feel comfortable with dipping into the reserves and uh, pushing towards that, that just means we have to kind of pick up the. The slack a little bit and start planning these things out a little earlier than what we did last year, but I think it's doable, I mean, clearly. If Tim and I uh, were able to kind of. But I think it's doable. I mean, clearly, if Tim and I were able to kind of spearhead a group like that with very minimal experience, I have faith that we're able to do this in a more coherent, intentional, long-term way, as long as we put our heads together to and put the effort where it needs to be. So for what it's worth, I do feel comfortable with the, the way that you all handled the budget and dipping into the reserves this year, acknowledging that that means that we have to start these conversations of increasing the revenue through fees, through sales tax increases for the twenty six budget ahead of time.
Uh, just another reminder about the sales tax task force. The, the main finding and the main recommendation was exactly what's been suggested here, was that we get ahead of planning and have a larger conversation around taxation in general with the county, with the school district, with some coordination there. That was the number one recommendation that we, that I think I appreciate has been brought to the surface again tonight. And so I agree with Christian, I am comfortable with dipping into the reserves in order to balance the budget this year. Contingent upon having these conversations about raising revenue, you know, for, for next year's budget for twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven. And I think we, we learned enough from those conversations in the task force to really have a a kind of a wake up on the planning that's needed to, to implement some of those revenue increases in future years. I'm not voluntarily on the sales tax task force again, just to be.
Now you do have the experience.
Comfortable with situation for this year. Going into it knowing we're going to be actively looking for more revenue. But obviously, you can't dip into the reserves every year. So if that starts to happen, then we are going to have to make some personnel changes.
Just exactly what I was saying.
And I'm agreeing, yeah. But that, and that is my opinion. Good with what we have for this year. Going into next year, knowing that something has, is going to have to change or we're going to have to start that.
Ms. Mayor, another point, please. The county still has the option to pull out of the animal shelter agreement. How does that impact our budget, should that actually happen?
If we go back to just city contribution only, then we will decrease services. We have no option.
Does that? So, and I haven't ever heard the county state that, but would, would the city be responsible for funding that four hundred and forty nine thousand dollars for the budget?
No, we would cut, start at the start of the year.
I think we all heard that ultimatum made in our, in our last word session two weeks ago.
Well, we heard an ultimatum made that they wouldn't contribute based on the current IGA. I'd never heard them say that they weren't going, they heard them say that they would assume it and then they would ask us for fifty percent.
I, I heard a variety of options from them.
And I'm sorry, that wasn't my question. My question is, how does that affect our budget, should that actually happen? Do we cut it, do we cut ours to half of what is projected and it's two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars?
That's what we did. I will get to you outside, I promise. You can, I just don't, don't wear your arm out.
I just don't know, since this is like a full budget conversation as opposed to like you were pausing between department conversations.
Can I ask, I, I can't see or hear who's from the back of the room?
But I will not forget you, or if I do, I know that you will call me out on it. Is there further discussion? We obviously cannot take a vote or make a decision tonight, but this is the time to air it all.
I agree with what's been said about doing this this year and and see how the year goes and twenty twenty six might be harder. I do have some worries about, it's always harder to grow and then cut back, so it's like it'll be more painful next year than it would be this year to make cuts. But I think that's worth the gamble if, if we're going to seek additional revenues streams. And if that doesn't happen, then well, it'll be hard. So I'm open to doing it, though.
I'm not sure the current budget reflects our stated priority specifically related to streets maintenance. There's no significant increase to that budget, so I'm holding out gold for some of the ARPA funds, but I think we really do need to prioritize getting the conversations with them.
And I think that's.
And just to clarify on that budget, we did drop it back down to what we did this year.
Yeah, what we did, what we did is at the council's suggestion, put it back where what we spent this year was about a hundred and thirty, and I think we did put some money towards a plan. I think that was the other issue that the, you know, I think.
Fifty and then twenty for road planning.
Correct.
I'm sorry, twenty for a plan?
Uh, for consultant to put, to do road planning. Hundred and fifty is what we cut it back to.
Thank you.
Yeah, so as I remember it, the, the discussion was that an increase wouldn't actually be implementable by the department. Is that right?
That, that was a concern.
Well, no, actually, the answer was the opposite. He essentially, Mr. Medina said it, it would be an outside contractor and that essentially if we were going to give somebody a big job to do a number of streets, it would be a little bit easier to secure that. But he would have to start earlier in the year.
The, but the thought was that the increase that we had originally assigned was probably not in line with what, what we, it wouldn't get us much bang for our buck. In other words, it wouldn't be that much more attractive.
If they could only pay the hundred and twenty thousand worth this year, what made us think that anything is going to change if personnel and and equipment and frankly, time available wasn't going to change?
And they had more done, they had more budgeted for that this year.
That they absolutely couldn't spend.
Religious discussion. It's okay, Jerry.
Process wise, when do we discuss as all, discuss this and make a vote on it?
That will be on December third, Rex Tuesday.
I mean, the issue too is that, uh, this is the discussion. We're going to present to you by resolution, a balanced budget that you have recommended today to, to vote upon. So making changes on the fly, I just want to make, make it clear, council should give direction to staff now so that we have a budget to present to you to approve by resolution on December third. And that has been our, our deadline for the council for this whole process is so that we can get that budget filed with the Department of Local Affairs on time.
One more point that I've seen across all of the departments is we have focused on training, and that makes sense, but I've noticed a rather large increase in the travel budget pertaining to training as well. Has that been looked at additionally?
I'm going to pump that back to, were there particular departments where you saw that might be easier to?
And, and once again, no, no problem with adding personnel or or adding support, and I understand the additional training required. But we've also bumped those travel budgets by double in a lot of cases, so.
But, but it would be easier to answer that question if you were specific about which department, because depending on where trainings are and how long they are or what they want to add, that is.
That makes perfect sense. And one second, well, yeah, no, we can talk about yours, that's fine, go ahead.
So most of the conferences are out of state. I think there was five hundred dollars in the travel budget. And when I went to the cell for training in December last year, like between flights and hotels was like a thousand dollars. So five hundred dollars doesn't get you very much unless you are maybe locally.
No, and that makes sense. And my question is, are we, between all the departments for training, travel, are we budgeting a specific amount of day? Like five hundred dollars a day for travel, or how did, how did we come to that number in each department? Assuming you have seven days.
Put in their, their family expenses, knowing on where their conferences are. Or, you know, what, what hotels or if there are flights or anything involved.
Okay, very good.
Estimates, and then we already have per diems baked in. Or like, like meal requests and things like, doing, they have to turn in all the receipts.
But is there a set number or is that number a random number attributed by the department head? In other words, we'll do five hundred dollars a day pleasure per diem.
Travel doesn't work that way. Travel, travel doesn't work. That it, it's a per day. So travel is, is our finance directors pointed out, it's your transportation. So it depends on where the conference is, whether you fly or drive, and then it's hotel. So for example, let's say, so our deputy city clerk goes to a conference in Fort Collins, and that's where the annual conference happens to be for city clerks. Hotels in Fort Collins maybe aren't as expensive as going to a conference in Salt Lake for finance directors or potentially for a casel training. So it's not a per day, it's the, the travel should be your actual cost and then your per diem is stays the same no matter what.
I was just trying to come up with the methodology and you answered my question. Thank you.
Other questions input now. The sto took himself offline, but he didn't. I have trouble talking through those things. I tried last meeting. You guys, can we open it to public comment now? You guys ready? Okay. Commissioner-elect Elsa, I came dangerously close to saying president-elect Elsa. Just don't want to lay, I don't know, lay, have any expectations here, but.
Um, I wanted to bring up, like, put you back on what Christian brought up, and what you all are already talking about is your revenue streams. And for sales tax, one of the powerful partners you all have in terms of getting more income into the city is the tourism panel. So here I am with my tourism panel hat on. And I'm going to talk about two A real quick. When two A was enacted, the intention was to make sure that the tourism panel, so the county's marketing budget was not cut. And so the, the funds that we would have lost were built into two A. So, so the intention was for the marketing arm of our county to have the same amount of money so we could do the same amount of marketing to make sure that people came into Leadville and Lake County. And what has happened since the city has started being in charge of collecting and remitting those funds to the panel is that actually in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three, the panel lost over a hundred thousand dollars of unremitted taxes. And our budget is not very big to be honest. Our budget is about three hundred thousand dollars a year. So a hundred thousand dollars is a huge amount of money that we did not get to continue to pump into marketing and advertising, to continue to bring people here that would continue to increase your revenue. And we are anticipating across the state, a decrease in Colorado's market shares of tourism. So we anticipate having fewer people coming to Colorado in general. And with that, it means that everybody is fighting for a smaller pool of tourists. And so when Lake County's marketing arm is also decreased in its funding, it just means that we have less money to leverage getting those heads and beds in this county which would be increasing your budget. So I just want to bring that up, that as you're considering economic development, as you're considering how you can actually impact businesses and people today, and in twenty twenty five, making sure that those funds can help get back into the tourism panel would actually do it, like immediately. So I appreciate, I appreciate long-term economic development thoughts, absolutely. And we have severely underfunded our current economic lever that would be increasing your sales tax. Or, you know, increasing the taxes that go to you. So I'm bringing this up now as you consider balancing your budget, as you consider economic development prospects that, um, that, I don't, there's like a the less and less we fund the tourism panel, the less and less we will be able to bring into the county. And I know that we're getting back up to right sizing two A remissions, and I appreciate all the work that's being done on that. But at a statewide level, in two thousand and eight, the state cut our Oleti, cut funding for advertising significantly. We had a huge cut in our state's advertising budget, and it lost us a billion dollars over ten years, and it took us twelve years to build back up to see the, to see our funds coming back in after having lost that revenue. So, so when we are not keeping our foot on the gas for getting people into our communities to spend money, that takes years and years to get that back. So the longer it takes the city to try to get that money back into the tourism panel, the longer we will have to, like, eke out those funds to get our market share back. And it's going to be a hard year for us all around in twenty twenty five, and we also anticipate twenty twenty six. And that'll be the same for Summit and Eagle, so our, so if they're not getting the same revenue stream, they're not going to come all the way to Leadville. You know, we need help along our corridors to get people all the way up here. And they're going to be fighting for this, those people to stay in their counties to not come all the way up. I just want to make it really clear that this is a viable option now for economic development, for increasing revenue streams, and I fully support all other levers that you all have that you want to pull in the future. I want to make sure this is part of the conversation now, and we're not just kicking it down the line until like, maybe we get some of those tax dollars back. Because we've needed that for the last two years. I also, there's one other thing, I wanted to check the math on this, but if the city has five million dollars in the budget or in reserves, that's true, then based on your twenty twenty five budget, you have enough in the general, you have enough in reserves for eight and a half months.
It's roughly seven months, almost seven months, it's six months, but that includes us as a whole and fire is restricted.
Got it. So if you take fire out of your twenty twenty four budget, it's actually more like three million dollars, three and a half, three point five plus the fund balance at the end of twenty twenty three.
There's some restricted funds. Yeah, I think it's nearly, nearly seven months.
Nice, yeah, awesome. Thank you. Steve, would you want?
Maybe what's going to be like happening in the next six years after Trump has his way with the United States. I, I, I see the next six or seven years a- after that, I mean. I I I see the next six or seven years a- a- after that, I mean. After today, um that we're might have some kind of recession. But who knows? Um, but my points are. Uh Christian brought up that one, one, one of the other meetings that we should maybe have a. Meters downtown for parking and I really don't like that idea, but it is an idea. Um, but the idea about increase uh. Increase increasing the sales tax to be comparable to the city and and counties around us, that is a good idea. Um, but I I also think there's three income streams that we might be missing. And this thing about being restricted by statutory laws. Um. I I'm not sure how that would play into that. I definitely don't wanna be a a home role city. But I think that the marijuana tobacco and package or bottle liquor sales. We should have a separate tax for that. Um, that could be considerable, especially the tobacco thing. And I don't think of that as a sin tax, I think of it as a stupid tax. I mean, tobacco is such a destructive thing. Uh, real estate tax. If realtors are selling properties for four hundred thousand dollars and they're making six percent on each sale. There has to be some kind of brainstorming on how to to get some of that income stream back into the government. And then. I think people that are second homeowners. They should receive some type of tax. Um because they're taking up, uh they're costing us um. By raising the rental and uh the the this is the, you know. It is, it you you we we have a provision on there for um. Incentives for ma- keep keeping employees. That's a product of that, the rents are so high here. And so are other things. So I'm thinking that if somebody has two homes. And anyone that um. Says, well, this is my primary residence now, but it's, they really have a residence from before. Um, I think that should be taxed as a separate uh entity somehow to do. Maybe it's unconstitutional, but I think it should be like that. Thank you kindly.
Thank you, Steve. Okay.
Oh, um, there's one other thing. Um, I got this article. It talked about the uh. Friday, November twenty-second, Denver Post. Uh homelessness in Denver audit criticizes shelter safety and accounting. And I'll just read one quick paragraph here. Denver lacks important security measures at its homeless shelters, does not keep track of its spending on the facilities. And is unable to ensure city funds are used appropriately. This was focusing, this article focused on the homeless shelter, their costs. And it goes back and forth. Uh, there's some. Uh, the 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 audit is eight months old and so on and so forth. But I think we have the same problem with handing out money to nonprofits. Um, I really wish someone would sit down and talk to me about. And it would take about half an hour, all the abuses of the the I noticed when I worked as a volunteer. At the uh St. George's. But we just gave him thirty thousand dollars because it's a good thing. There there needs to be much more accountability. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
That must mean to the whole meeting, sorry.
Well, the good news is we don't have any money to give to nonprofits next year, so we can rest easy. We don't have any money to give to nonprofits next year. Um, everybody ready to move on to ARPA? Or do you wanna take, it's right at eight, does anybody need a break?
Yes, please.
Okay, five minute break. Put your ARPA hats on, plug us in again. Eight oh five and we, sorry, eight oh two on my watch and we are back. Um, uh, the last thing on our agenda is talking about American Rescue Plan Act funding allocation. Um, we have have had a glancing blow with this earlier. Um. Cisco sent out a an excellent spreadsheet. Uh for us to consider, but really, um, what I would like to do tonight is get to a place where we can. Um. Uh where where we can expect I can go forward and create a resolution. That, you know, we can formally decide on it next week. And direct me to write a resolution with all or Hillary or whoever to write a resolution with. Where our decisions will go, but I just wanted to kind of talk through some of the things that have come up the last time that we that we dealt with this. Um, there is one uh option where uh uh council member Best will need to. To excuse and reuse himself, so why don't we save that for last? Um, I think. To council member Thomas's point earlier. Um, having, you know, road improvement or planning or any infrastructure is an absolutely acceptable. Use for ARPA funds because we have some uncertainty coming up about. Uh, you you know, like. Will we be able to, you know, hu- use grant money to uh uh. Address our stormwater drainage, will we be able to be able to find a contractor? To work on specific streets. God willing, if sightwises out of the way, um, you know, that sort of thing. So I think, for example, we could take the. Um, engineering support for planning and make it more like. Like ro- you know, like roads and infrastructure.
It would still fall under support for planning. But that those funds attributed specifically for.
Need to do to make it ARPA eligible is is make it clear this is for like roads and infrastructure. And not, you know, planning is a little.
Understood, but it could still be a engineering consultant.
Yes. It could be a planning part of roads and infrastructure. It could be. It could be, if it comes to it, you know, could be used for um using a contractor if it. If a particular paving project comes up and looks very compelling, um.
And that engineering contract plan would be nice because there's no, there's no expiration date for those plans. We could get those plans done. And then we can act on them when we can, but it's sitting there as a resource.
We just have to expend the funds by the end of next year. Yeah, so I think for me anyway, that's sort of a no-brainer. Um. What um the way that that Cisco had sort of dialed this out was. Taking the remaining funds and doing fifty thousand and in each of three buckets and eighty-five in the fourth bucket. Does anyone have any feeling about about fund amounts? Other than what what um what Cisco proposed.
My only question on that would be on the employee retention bonus. That means that we are not planning. To have an employee retention bonus for twenty twenty-six.
Correct, we will be out of ARPA funds.
Yeah, so that that's kind of the stated intention is to spend all of that for twenty twenty-five.
We have to, otherwise we're just leaving money on the table.
We could do half and half at twenty-five and twenty-six, but we decided to spend it all in twenty twenty-five.
We have to expand all of the ARPA funds by the end of next year.
I thought it was twenty twenty-six that it had.
Can you, I might be wrong.
I thought it had to be attributed this year, but spent over the next two years. And I just wanted to make sure that we understood we're spending it all in one year.
That is, I thought it was by the end of next year, but I could possibly be wrong about that.
Okay, I understood that we had two years to spend it and if that's incorrect, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Okay.
For the engineering plan or did we just? I have not heard back from this gentleman, but I um. But I think we could also leverage, you know, like assuming. If grant programs proceed apace, like we could also acknowledge that as a city contribution.
I think you're correct, Charlie.
It has to be attributed this year, but it could actually spend.
Spend over the next two years.
By the end of twenty twenty-six, that was my.
That's a relief.
Well, but.
Yeah.
If we make a resolution that it's spent in twenty-five, then it has to be spent in twenty-five. We can't change that after we make that resolution.
Yeah.
I I don't, I don't think that's, I don't, I don't think that's true. I I actually don't think you have to specify what year you're spending it in.
Okay. But the intention is to not carry that program on after those funds are gone.
Yeah, that was, that's never been the intention. Yeah, yeah. Um.
I have a question about the emergency shelter and if that could come from accommodations tax.
We will have to excuse council member Best if we wanna talk about that next.
Okay, I think that's a primary question for me because if that does, if we could do that.
Yeah, let's let's discuss that. So I I would prefer uh recusing myself now anyway, cuz even the discussions of the other. Amounts will will impact the discussion of the emergency shelter. So on advice of the city attorney, I'm accusing myself. From this discussion as director of the Advocates Bridge Program, which is implementing the emergency shelter.
I I do not. I do not, it's my love. Okay, um, Councilman Best has done a tremendous amount of of. Of consulting with the attorney to try to do this wisely. Um, we, one of the things that. That she brought up because the CUP, there's actually, there's just no. Strip, there's just no way that the CUP can be heard before the dedication of ARPA funds. So. Um, what she recommended, again, because we do not have to say like, this is the entity that will receive. ARPA funds is that we do a more kind of generic, you know, like.
And emergency shelter.
Or that or housing opportunities, you know, that kind of. Even level, I'm sorry, I don't have my computer in front of me.
And then should something monkey wrench the shelter plan, we literally could continue to use.
And that would be the, that's the safety valve, which I think is really important. She actually sent some, some recommended language um to use. For that and I liked it because it was, you know, it was in a category that was covered, but it was, it was vague enough that if. If everything goes haywire uh with the proposed shelter, then we are not, we don't have our hands tied.
And we can still use those funds. To Cisco's question, can this come out of accommodations tax?
I, so that I think we would have to go back to the ballot language. I know the ballot language was was uh vague enough to to kind of talk about housing opportunities instead of. Going, you know, like has to go to regional housing authority. I think in order, you know, like if it came to that, we would have to have a real sit down with the regional housing authority and. You know, like the same way that the tourism board feels, you know, like they they haven't received what they anticipated. You know, to suddenly make a decision to be like, you know, actually, instead of. Going to regional housing authority, some of which has to go to the ED's salary. And I think one of the questions we need to hear from the regional housing authority is, do they intend that part of gonna hire another ED?
So I can answer that.
Yeah, oh wait. Oh, I forgot, we have two representatives.
Yeah, we. We we discussed this in the last meeting. And I think the plan is to move forward with the director. There's enough work there to be done. And I would prefer not taking that out of the accommodations tax that because regional housing authority. Doesn't have any other revenue stream.
Yeah.
So I would prefer to keep that.
Little bit.
Um, and Christian can speak to it as well.
Hey, let me, yeah, let's. Do you mind if we hear from?
Yeah, um, I fully agreed with Tim. We we had a lengthy discussion about. Um, having the staff and personnel and we we do, as Tim uh mentioned, believe strongly that there is enough work for a full-time position. We have some promising promises to apply um for very experienced people, so. I think it's worthwhile to explore this uh option for a needy and I agree that. We don't wanna tie our hands into committing this elsewhere. Um, and feel like this is the most comfortable area to access the funds for the regional housing authority. Um, and continuing a similar style of contribution as we have before uh with the city and county. Uh, the county does seem up to um the current discussions of the. Uh, pay for the person, which I believe uh we agreed upon ultimately at a sixty-five to eighty thousand dollar range uh. Uh salary and the county uh temporarily, I mean, for this point of view, uh still providing the benefits. Continuing on with that style of operation, just cuz of course we don't have revenue yet. Um. And additionally, just want to clarify that um. It, you know, I I think we need to take a little bit of a harder look as to what the actual full numbers will be. Will end up being um and comparing that to the salary and any other asks. To uh for the city period for housing, uh whether it's regional housing authority or not. Um, cuz I'm, we were looking at the revenues and in that meeting, it seemed like there was more. Uh two A funds potentially, and especially now that we're gonna, you know, clamp down a little bit more on enforcement. Um, there's more potential there than we. Uh, had for the staff themselves, um at least looking at the rough budget numbers. So. I I was really interested to hear where that went. But also wanted to strongly advocate against uh limiting the two A funds. Uh by a wooden sign, at least seemingly from my understanding, one-time request uh from the advocates.
Yeah, further said, you know, if you leave that money for the housing authority. Then the housing authority, at least for the short term, would not have any additional ask from the city.
I personally think it's really important, you know, the housing authority is still very young. It's been tremendously. Active and effective in its in its short life. Um, but I still think it is a uh it it is a. Is really necessary commitment to support this young organization and, you know. To help it thrive, um get its feet under itself again with a new ED, et cetera. Um, so I'd be. Fairly loathe to um to limit it at this time.
I'm curious, um, if we're bringing in about three hundred thousand dollars of accommodations tax a year. It's quite the range, but um it seems like that's a reasonable. Especially with increased enforcement, a reasonable number. Does the regional housing authority have plans to spend three hundred thousand this year? Sure, yeah, okay. So what is it? It's about a forty-sixty split?
And have a uh. Eighty thousand, potentially eighty thousand dollar position with the director.
Yeah.
And then whatever's left after that, the regional housing authority would not have trouble spending, I'm sure.
Yeah, and especially not six A passed and you guys can actually.
We can accumulate the expense.
Yeah, we. Uh, we're not sure what programs the future might offer to us, you know. And we don't wanna kneecap ourselves with any potential limitations to that type of revenue, given that this is the only. Consistent revenue that the regional housing authority currently has, uh that being the uh accommodations tax. Not that, not that it's ours alone, of course, we can always choose to use it somewhere else, but. You know, as it sits currently, that's what we have been traditionally using for at the city council level.
Revenue stream, I would be a little less firm, but that's all we have right now, so. Um, economic development portion that we're considering, is there any limitation to us being able to attribute that to? The Lake County Tourism Panel?
So the, here's my feeling on it, that. We have lagged in our ability to enforce and recoup um. The accommodations tax. We have at no small expense. Brought on an enforcement arm that right now is is in action, the first, you know, well, I don't wanna rain on your. On your parade deputy city clerk, but. You know, we will start being able to recruit that in the very, very near future. We have until February to go go back to the. From the pre- from the dis- the twenty twenty-two, um. And then we can move up and we, um, actually, uh, the deputy city clerk and I discussed this today. That there seems to be a a pathway so that we can. That there seems to be a a pathway so that we can. It will take some work, which I am not going to talk to Crystal about right now, uh, because it will need to be some coordination between finance and deputy city clerk to. To help identify like, how much of the twenty twenty-two gap are we filling? How much of the twenty twenty-three gap are we filling? And so we've just started this program. We have two months. Let's see where it gets us before we declare ourselves a failure. The other reason why I would be against giving it to the tourism panel is that I think it's bad policy. I think it's bad policy to say, we expected this much tax revenue, we didn't get it, and so the city's gonna backfill it. And that's a, it's a bad precedent to start.
But it, but there's nothing that precludes us from being able to do that. If we wanted to attribute those EDC, those funds earmarked free DC, which is acceptable to ARPA.
Economic development, not.
That's, that's a good question, and I don't know if the tourism panel itself would be a, in a.
Question, is it, is it, is it a valid recipient?
I will find out, um, but I don't, I don't know, because it is not a, it's not a nonprofit, and I don't know. I I'm not really sure if that would fit in those in those acceptable buckets under the overarching economic development.
It would be nice to know that before we have to make a decision.
Mm-hmm, okay, we don't, we can't make a decision tonight, we're just. Identifying any questions is really important, and I think.
Oh, go ahead and finish.
Are we gonna have the opportunity to have a presentation from retail strategies before we actually have to make a decision?
Uh.
I I still have no idea.
Yeah, I've announced it uh multiple times that that we are going to have the presentation on the seventeenth. I've announced it to the public and. The food strategies meeting last weekend and in your, in my last city administrator's report, that it will be on your agenda with the presentation. On the seventeenth.
I think that was my request. It would have been nice to know about the. Get together you did on Saturday. I I hate that I missed it, but I only ever found out about it after it was finished. Um, but good, we will have a presentation on it so we can make an informed decision.
Yeah, I'll give that feedback to the Lake County Build a Generation. I, they, it was their event and I I know they advertised it on Facebook and. Multiple other channels, but I I will give them that feedback.
No, just hav- having the opportunity to know who we're considering giving money to would seem to be a a good thing.
Councilmember Lina Laya?
Yeah, I I guess my initial reaction um towards the discussion of this going towards tourism panel or. Um, and I guess I'm specifically talking about uh that section of the ARPA funds, tourism panel or um. The retail strategies, um, I. I agree with Joey that a presentation would be helpful for this to understand kind of what we're getting ourselves into. I understand the premise of it. If I were to choose one over the other, uh, just off of my initial feeling, I agree fully with uh Meredith agreeing that. It doesn't make sense to backfill for that um at a policy point of view and also. I don't know that I personally feel like we necessarily need to play the role of backfilling. Uh, for for everything, otherwise we'd be backfilling a lot more, uh, including the regional housing authority. I understand that we have. Given no substantial amount to the regional housing authority for other reasons, but those were for other reasons under different pretenses. Um, and I think it'd only be appropriate if we would backfill one to also backfill the other. Uh, and uh, if we were to go that route, which I think would be completely inappropriate, and I think we should just. Focus on getting that road fixed um rather than trying to pay uh for any damages caused to the vehicle, so to say. Yeah, go ahead, Dana.
No, no, go ahead, Christian.
Yeah, ultimately, I I do genuinely feel like that that should be our strategy moving forward and. I do think that's the. Appropriate decision to try to increase revenue in a different strategy while still supporting wholeheartedly the. That first tourism's doing, and tourism panels doing by capturing uh any potential revenue we left behind. I think the important thing to note is that, uh, as as the mayor said, the year is literally at the year of the. Date that the revenue needed to be collected, not necessarily the beginning of the year, that won't invalidate all of the revenue immediately. It will go month to month to month. So that's, yeah, go ahead.
I was gonna say, there's another point to add there is that the reason for this kind of three-year. Barrier is that the the people who are renting short-term rentals are required to hang on to their records for three years. There's, there's actually nothing that prevents us from asking for tax money that they owe from prior to that. I think it does decrease the likelihood that somebody would come forth if, you know, if they've actually destroyed their records to say, no, 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 that's wrong, you know, like. Here's my records, but. I think the um, you know, like that, that's the, that's the limit. It's not that we can't ask, it's that, that is how long they are required to hang on to their records. Um, the other thing that I think is important, um, a important piece of information is that the head of the tourism board. Highly supports the retail strategies and was able to meet with them when uh when their representative came out. And when I was speaking with him later about, you know, like, well, this question came up and we don't know this question, and he would, he would say, but you're gonna do it, right? You're gonna do it, right? Like, he is very interested in what I'm talking about in Dushan. So I, he is very interested in the potential hotel. Um, attraction that they, that they also will help with, and they're aware of our kind of two um. Our our bilateral interest uh for their work.
Are there any other potential asks? Is it some mix of these four? From anyone on?
The only that, you know, no one has specifically come since we finished our own community funding request to ask. Um, I'm sure any of the nonprofits who have previously asked us, you know, we didn't meet their request. We couldn't this year, we didn't. So those would, I I I presume be additional. Um, I do think that the city is, has used. The ARPA funds in the past um for a lot of local nonprofits and. What I think would be helpful is for us to use for some of our projects, right? Our roads, our economic development, you know, in in. Turn them toward toward city projects rather than, you know, funding.
And and we we should be clear that C four has asked, they have made a direct ask for ARPA funds and.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, but we, we can't, we can't create a structure and then not abide by it. You've you've created a structure for community contributions. And I think to have one or one um entity. Not have to go through that process and get ARPA funds just because they asked. Uh, I think if we are going to open up ARPA funds. To community contributions, it should be open up to everyone and, you know, I uh adore C four. I, you know, I have, think they've done fantastic things, but I think out of fairness, if we're gonna open it up. To uh community contributions, then we should open up an application process.
But isn't that exactly what the advocates ask is?
The advocates asked earlier this year was three hundred thousand dollars, and that was for something different. That was before this project.
I understand that, and I'm not, I'm not naysaying anything, but it isn't the C four ask the same ask as the advocates ask. When it comes right down to. From a perception standpoint, aren't they the same ask? I understand they're structured differently.
Right, you know, and I think that's a really good point. I don't know if. You know, like the argument, well, we, you know, we've given to C four before, we've never given to the advocates before, you know, if that. Would be.
Did the advocates go through the same, did they fill out that same form when they came to you with this ask? The same form that C four had filled out before?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because that is, that form, I mean, we could, I could certainly ask for it, but that form was really meant for our. Community contribution money, so.
I understand, and my question was a perception question, but it seems like. The same type of ask for a, for a local nonprofit. I just want to make sure that we make a decision based on that. I'm, I'm not opposed to either one, but it.
Well, in the year before last, like, we gave a significant amount of money, roughly a million dollars. To multiple nonprofits, so. Councilmember Lina Laya?
Uh, I guess I should preface this fully with the same, I'm employed by C four, so. I guess, disclosure, um, I have feelings. About the idea that um. We necessarily limit asks in a general sense uh by any partner. Um. To just the contribution amount. I think anyone should be able to ask for any amount. And then we kind of decide if that, like, fits with the budget that we have. Uh, obviously, that means with the contingency fund that we put towards that or the funds that we put towards the the process that we already have. But, you know, if a project in the future, and I want to specify in the future, were to come out. I I would want to hear that. I do think that there is a role in terms of partnership. One thing that I think is incredibly important is that we're never gonna be able to do everything ourselves. And if there is a high need in our community for a service that we can't offer, but we can partner in, I would hate to. Put ourselves and pigeonhole ourselves in a way that we can't in the future support that need because. They went through this process that limited them to an ask of eight thousand dollars. I I guess that's my. Only caveat with that new program is that I'm okay with every ask going through there, and I'm okay with the idea being that we spend those eight thousand and that's our limit. And, you know, if requests come through there that are for a bigger ask, I do think we should consider them. Uh, for what they are, um, and obviously acknowledge that our our general limit is our north star and we should follow that, but. I just don't want to pigeonhole ourselves in the future, and that's, that's how I view that as a service. I think there's gonna be a lot of opportunities to really work together with all these nonprofits to even. Increase revenues in ways that we didn't before. I mean, for example, our uh Excel bills are exorbitantly high. Uh, for multiple buildings, that'd be a great opportunity where we could work together with um AC four, really any other nonprofit. Um, so that's kind of where my thought process goes behind that, and I just don't want us to fall into the trap of. That, you know, oh, we have two thousand dollars budgeted for that ask. And any request above that is just kind of like, oh, whatever, you're speaking blasphemy. You're not allowed to talk to us or whatever. I just don't want. That to be the the pigeonhole, and that's kind of the feeling that I'm getting um off of that um. Off of that, uh, what Lori, what you had mentioned, um, not to say that we shouldn't follow the process, I totally get you on that, but. When we also say, yeah, this is the process and we don't. Want to hear any requests above that, that that makes me feel, and maybe I'm just mishearing that, but that makes me feel like we're. Pigeon horse, pigeonholing ourselves, um, and I think the advocates ask is a perfect example of how. That would have been a very negative impact.
Thank you.
One other thing we talked about during this whole budget process is the need for additional revenue, and I wonder if some of the ARPA funds could be used to. Fund or partially fund grant writer. And I don't know if that's an appropriate use of the ARPA funds or not, but that would, that would certainly have potential to increase revenue.
I don't know if that would be covered.
Can we ask that question as well?
Yes.
Please. Another concern for half of the shelters, I have not seen a plan.
That's, and that's part of the problem with not being able to hear the CUP first.
Right, yeah, that does create conflict, but. I mean, is that a one-time ask? Is that going to be sustainable?
So my understanding is that it is a one-time ask, and that the funds would. Make or break the ability for it to open when assuming that the CUP and all of that.
And the other, the other concern I have, I don't mean to be a wet blanket on this, but.
We're all taking turns.
According to the certain, the Magellan survey, homelessness services rent dead last.
Hmm.
And what people would like to see their money spent on, so we need to take that into consideration.
Thank you for digging up that data.
I feel like a, an emergency shelter like that, and and granted, I would also like to see a plan before we decide on. That, and I get the complexity there, but I think our community really needs to address. The problem of homelessness and people not having shelter. It's an increasing problem. I think if the city were to try to address it on our own, it would be much more expensive than partnering with a a nonprofit. Um, I think if it also will have increased costs for our police department, EMS. If we're not addressing it interactively. So we have a shelter for animals in our community. We do not have a shelter for people. And I think that is very telling, and I feel like we owe our citizens, some of whom are unhoused. The very basics of a safe, warm place to get back on their feet.
Something. Something we need to be aware of. This is framed as a one-time ask, and I think for this very specific use, this is a one-time ask, but once. There is an operating homeless shelter, this is not a one-time, this is an ongoing, long-term commitment. From all parties involved, the city only being one.
Sure.
Yes, this is a one-time ask, but we are making a commitment, kind of with hope. That that is an ongoing commitment and and it's some, it's some small part is borne by the city, so. It's interesting the way it's framed, and I understand the way it's framed, but we need to look at it through a different lens. Once we have a homeless shelter, nobody's gonna be talking about closing a homeless shelter. Exactly the same thing with an animal shelter.
We had talked earlier about making this funding for homeless or maybe just housing, funding for housing. Fairly generic in terms of that ARPA request. So if the, this particular emergency shelter fails. What would be the alternative use of that funding if we had set it aside? It sounds like the housing authority doesn't need it for.
Do you have the wording from the attorney that they gave you? Or is that not applicable right now?
I, it may not be applicable right now. She just gave me what some other um.
Does it delineate?
Allies had done, and it was very vague.
Uh, does it delineate affordable housing or just community housing or?
Housing opportunities and, you know, things like related, that housing opportunities stuck in my head, very vague.
Thank you.
I just wonder if we have a plan B for this particular emergency shelter. Because it sounds like, I I don't know what.
A plan B for the funds or plan B.
So like, so if the shelter CUP does not go through, it's a brick wall.
Right.
Then we can do the same thing with the infrastructure funds for an engineering consultant, also.
Vague.
Can. Can we redistribute it if required?
I mean, that would all be in the language of the resolution.
Yeah.
So that would be kind of up to the lawyer to leave some ambiguity there.
Right.
I'm I'm more comfortable with what the future path looks like for the engineering plan. I'm less comfortable with what plan B looks like for housing. I just don't know what would go if it didn't go towards this shelter.
And it would be wonderful to know if we could use some ARPA funds for a grant writer.
I will find that, I will find that out. I was actually talking to the administrative assistant today about. You know, can we grow a grant writer from within our current staff, given some of the training that's available, um.
If we have the ARPA funds, we could hire Christie Galarza. She's quite good.
She is quite good. She back to town?
Uh, yeah, but she doesn't have to be.
She works remotely.
Exactly. But there are people out there who will do this on a consultant basis that are very specifically talented in running grants.
Yeah.
I do think, um, Joey, to your point that if we were to invest in a, a shelter now, it would. Demand an ongoing cost in the future.
I just want to make sure we're aware of that.
But I do think there's opportunity, and we've talked about it for a long time, there's a lot of opportunity to increase our accommodations tax. Which will be no burden on locals.
Mm-hmm.
And if that accommodations tax could be, you know, continue to fund the tourism panel, continue to fund the housing authority. Homeless services.
But who makes the decision for that distribution? I don't. Is it council that can?
So, so right now, because there's two entities, the tourism panel gets. So so right now, because there's two entities, the tourism panel gets a particular percentage.
Right.
Right, and the remainder.
But it's but it's actually council's ability to divvy that up, is that correct?
It is not beholden to go to the housing authority. It is beholden to go to community housing or we'd.
So should there actually be some huge boost, and we actually find that we're collecting what we should be, and it's a much larger. Amount that then we truly can redistribute that from the two ways to three channels or even potentially four channels later on.
Or if we increase the accommodations tax.
Yes, we have the ability to do that.
Thank you.
And I think that's what I would propose to your point as. I think I think it's important to fund homeless services in our community. I think an accommodations tax is the best long-term plan. Given that it is not an immediate option, perhaps because of housing authority um. Commitments and budgeting, which I understand, I think this ARPA money is a reasonable thing to spend on that startup cost. And then look at this a sustainable funding.
That makes sense. Is that accommodations tax, does that have to go as an initiative, or is it something that can be determined by council? How do you raise an accommodation system?
To 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 raise, to raise a tax, you'd have to go to the voters.
I I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Um, council number zero layer.
Yeah, we would uh sure, we would initiate that process most likely unless the public were to do a similar thing to. T V swims, I don't know if they could for accommodation steps, so um. So I I I wanted to highlight that this, uh of course, is a, in my opinion also, uh. And acknowledging that I've played a role in somewhat um at least starting this project, the homelessness project at the advocates through the. Task force, but not um in any way, shape or form benefiting off of that, of course. Um, there I do think there is a long-term commitment in uh throwing our hat in the ring, so to say. And yeah, certainly is, does feel like it's framed in a very one-sided manner, and I wanna acknowledge that. Um, and I also wanna acknowledge that, like ultimately. If we don't address this one way, it will be addressed in a very drastic. Negative way, and it makes me feel like this is a non-negotiable on my part, um having some sort of. Uh thought-through solution towards homelessness. Um, I work heavily in my day job with people who live in their vehicles, and as you heard today alone. Um, there is a more and more issues with vehicles being parked in areas, non-operational vehicles being utilized. Um, sometimes these are utilized by people who live in their vehicles, and this is a way to potentially. Um, not have that be a long-term issue with R Vs uh being parked in private land and et cetera, et cetera, so. In my mind, this kind of helps everyone, it helps people who live in their vehicles have a shelter in the winter, which. Um, trust me, most people want that, um and would much mu- which would would much rather prefer staying inside a. Uh, building instead of in their vehicles, as it's just way more reliable for heat um. And I it it's it's a really, really big issue in our community, one that goes unnoticed in many ways. Uh, to the point to where we're pretty sure we have, I I mean, I personally work with well over well over twenty members, but we're pretty sure we have over thirty-two. In these conditions actively uh homeless community members, so it's an issue and it's only going to continue to be an issue in the future. Um, that we unfortunately do need some sort of uh solution towards and as uh. Cisco pointed out, if we don't handle this uh through partnership, we're gonna inevitably have to handle this as a city much like. Um, Denver has and much like these other areas have on their own, and that's just, I don't think a. A feasible long-term solution for us to, you know, undergo, so if we can get a more successful, short-term. Uh, thing set up and maybe set the advocates up for a more long-term operation that. Uh, that just benefits all of us tremendously and lowers the costs that would come directly from governmental entities. Uh, where, you know, uh we see other cities take those costs up almost fully.
So, thank you. Other discussion? Want to say? So what I have written down is that I will find out if the tourism panel actually could be a recipient of our performance or not. I will find out if we can use our funds to fund grant writing assistance. Um. And I will keep asking, sorry, give me kind of a ballpark figure of what he thinks a stormwater drainage plan might land is. Um. Are there other factors anybody would like to um consider before I take public comment?
The only other question that I had is, we had twenty thousand dollars in the planning budget for engineering consultancy. Could those ARPA funds have that number?
I.
Potentially, or does it need to stay completely separate? Only only because we have something in the budget dedicated that direction, and I understand that that's planning and you're trying to. Keep things in online. I was just wondering this.
I mean, planning's engineering is really like for.
Streets.
For 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 zone, for for plan, uh all the questions that Chapin has for our consultants.
So just really two separate things.
Very different tasks in general.
Yeah, I I was just. Hiring a consultant.
When I first thought like, wow, I'd really like to pursue a consultant for a stormwater drainage plan, I think my instructions were. If you tell Chapin, you have to instruct him that he is not allowed to pay any attention to it because it just, you know, it would be like this other huge. Project for him to work on. So technically, yes, it probably could fit under planning, but I don't think there is the, there's the space for that. Um, other comments? Ten would jump all right, ten? And then uh well, we'll get him coming back and and then let's hear from you.
Okay, okay.
Hey, ten.
Can you go upstairs?
He's upstairs, yeah.
I don't think that's called it that.
I thought it was. So I don't go up, I didn't see it come down.
I think I saw it come back down.
Sorry.
It's like. Um, Steve, do you wanna, do you wanna wait for them to come back? You wanna give us your comment?
Yeah, can I leave?
Yeah, of course. See you sleep. He's talking.
My Justin.
We are whole now. We're gonna take public comment. Thank you. All right.
Okay, I've brought this up before at other meetings, um but you talked about other factors affecting this uh. Particular thing you're talk, you're talking about um. Focusing on the emergency shelter. Um. There's been recent federal decisions about homelessness. I think it's in California and Oregon. And um having a shelter with rules precludes people that don't wanna follow those rules. From living homeless in our uh local environment here. Because um I walked through the woods and they leave hard messages in the woods. Um, so if we have a shelter for people that are homeless. And rules that they have to abide by, such as drugs and alcohol and behavior. Then um and they can't follow those rules, then they don't have a recourse to go live in the woods then. Or if we don't have that shelter, they can live in the woods, and by these federal decisions, we can prosecute them for living in the woods. So. This comes down to mental health, I believe, and. Some people are victims of their mental health. And I don't wanna victimize them further, but then I don't want them victimizing the community by us having such a broad. Uh, it's okay with us kind of idea. So I think getting back to this article, I I skimmed in the in the. Denver Post, we really have to think about when we have the shelter, we have to think about security. And we have to think about a rule-based thing as far as. You what you have, what what's what's the minimum we have to do uh to stay in here? Um, just for everybody, Sandy, thank you.
Thanks very much. Well, that brings us to the end of the agenda for the last comments before I drop the gavel.
One mayor that I should have said earlier, and it just took me a while to really. I think formulated in my mind, um. I do think our budgets should be an expression of our strategic priorities and values, and I think in many ways it is, and and lots of ways and. Lots of details that the department heads have thoughtfully planned and to incorporate those um. It's a little worrisome to me to see such a large increase in the police department budget, and I I understand the rationale behind it. Um. But as we've. Done the Magellan survey, for example, and we've heard from people, I I don't recall hearing a lot of. Um, call for increased police department spending, things like that, and so I'm cur- just curious. I don't think it'd be money poorly spent, but at a time when we're. We're exceeding our budget capacity now, I do wonder if anyone else sees that and has that concern about. Um. Does that match the the future value envision we have?
I will say that um we are nearly to the point where we can handle our own. Twenty-four seven schedule and not have the sheriff backfill. If we cut personnel, for example, we rely more heavily on the sheriff, and that is a much more expensive deal.
Hmm.
So keep that in mind.
Um, is that cost savings money not going to the sheriff's department? Is that reflected?
I didn't see, I didn't see the I G A contribution reflected, but it might have been, and I just missed it.
I don't think that they have invoiced us for this year.
And that would be important to have for the budget.
Well, it it for the budget next year, I don't know with our current staffing. That that will have a significant draw. I I would just wanna check out for twenty twenty-four, I have.
There was some, but I don't know. Again, I don't know how much coverage that is yet, to know when they're not built for.
And I didn't ask the chief earlier, but with his staffing and with him acting as a. A fully active officer.
Hmm.
How close are we to being able to have it at minimum one officer on twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week?
One, one more, one more patrol officer, one vacancy.
One more vacancy gets us one twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
Hmm.
So we'll still have a small backup from the sheriff's department, potentially for time off and.
Well, no, 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 let's, 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 it's not backup, because backup means you come out on a call with them, coverage, it would be their. Correct term.
Thank you, and and terminology there, yes, uh. But potentially that I G A still requires some.
It's it's possible. We have a much greater ability to. To to backfill for vacations and illnesses with a fully staffed department. We, this year, we decreased. But in times when we were really lean, and we decreased how much we relied on the sheriff's department because of individual officers, and specifically. Uh, Officer Ortega or Sergeant Ortega, who who did a considerable amount extra.
Yeah, no, it's better than it was six months ago, no question.
Yeah.
I share the same.
And. I was gonna say, one of the issues is burnout, and and not just our own staff burnout, but we. You know, I I think you may have heard some of the irritation in the sheriff's voice when he would come and talk to us about how much coverage. We were requiring from the sheriff's office, so. N- not just to preserve our own staff, but our, just to preserve our own community law enforcement members in general. Uh, we need to carry our own weight.
Cisco, I understand your concern with the police department budget. I share the same concern with the animal shelter budget and the increases that have been proposed. And I still share a very large concern with future planning of what could be a community center.
Yeah, I will say, I also share uh Cisco's concern about the increase in budgets. Taking up a sizable amount of our budget at this point, um and I I'm not sure I fully buy into the idea that. A town of four thousand people needs uh twenty-four seven coverage of a sole. Police department when we also have potential partners, um I. That's just how I personally feel, and maybe there's some creative solutions to that I've alluded to before. A call, uh on-call system rather than a full-time, fully badge person, I guess, but. It 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 just, it rubs me the wrong way, um when I see a. Like ever-increasing, and I know it's not ever-increasing, but just a highly-increasing department when we have all these other needs. Uh, very clearly highlighted, but I, by our community, including, of course, uh infrastructure with road maintenance and of course, housing, so. I completely on the same boat on that, and it does, you know, come to question uh for that, and I'm not necessarily in disagreement that the animal shelter. Could use a hard look as well, but when we look at the overall budgets, there's one that's just intensely higher than. The rest, really, so that's that's kind of where I. Um, that that's my feeling as well, my two cents of it, um. But yeah.
I think it's a, you know, it's a point well taken. I do think it is, I mean, the sheriff has repeatedly. Um, come out very strong strongly against an on-call. System, and I think we would end up in a situation where we would need to be very clear in an I G A, say, if if. Leadville P D went on call. And there's a call in the city, but a sheriff's deputy can get there quicker. You know, like, does that fall under our current I G A and therefore higher cost? Uh, for 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 service.
There's a liability factor for a municipality.
Hmm.
To decide that they wanna do any portion of their coverage on an on-call basis.
I mean, to to make it clear, having worked in many small towns across Colorado, there are plenty that do.
Sure.
Have, you know, a few hours in the in the wee hours of the morning where, um, you know, there's nobody.
Um, well, and and we've been that way for a long time, of course, but we've spent so many.
The model exists, but the cert, the ideal is clearly twenty-four seven.
Uh, uh, we have put so much energy and resources into building that department this year and bringing in a. A a a chief that can move that forward. At at this point, I think he deserves every opportunity to. To prove that these were worthwhile investments that we have spent the last year making.
And my feeling is like, if we can, if we can increase, so the main complaint, not the main complaint today, the main complaint I got was about tonight. Um, the the main complaint that I get kind of across the year is enforcement. People are parking here, this car's been there forever, you know.
And that seems to be, and that seems to be a focal point for.
It's a, it it is, and if we can improve and and expand our enforcement of. Uh, traffic violations, um, you know, code violations. A, not only is that a revenue source, but but B, like if we, my feeling is like, we wanna be a town that is, that is. Respected, respectable, we need to act like we're worthy of that.
Yeah, yeah. And enforcement is.
Is.
A starting place.
Exactly, thank you. Okay. Thanks. Other last minute comments? Okay, so Lori, this is, I just wanna ma- make a point that I had the opportunity to cut everybody off and drop the gavel on my guests. And I didn't, so um we've come to the end of our meeting. It is eight fifty-six.
Oh, it told me eight over there. That must be nice.
I. And Christian had to spend, how many hours did you have to spend in the airport yesterday?
Uh, eight.
Oh.
Incidentally, so that was fun. Have a good night, y'all.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Um.
Good night.
Sarah.
Good evening, everybody.
Yes, ma'am.